Interesting. You guys happy? Want to try it? Okay. All right, good morning, everybody. I'm going to open up this Yamhill County Board of Commissioners Formal Session on November 13th at 10:00 a.m. And I had asked Mark Lago to lead us in the flag salute. Thank you very much. We have, see our calendar session, is there any changes? None? Then, okay. We're going to change up public comment a little bit. We're going to actually move it to item E. And we're going to move up our presentation for our veterans appreciation to item D. So up next is our presentation. Guess I'll just kick it off with a little bit of background. What happened this morning, so 9:00 a.m. this morning. Thank you to our HR department. We're trying to do a little bit more as a county to recognize our employees. And so today, we recognized our veterans that work for us. And it was very well attended by employees that were non-veterans and the veterans that came. I really do appreciate that. And if there's a commissioner like just to kind of give a little rough rundown of from this morning, that'd be great. And then we'll get into some name and some recognition.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, I didn't know we had so many veterans. And it's just such a great service that they're continuing when you think about the sacrifices that they've already made in serving our country. And then they come here and they've got that work ethic and that mentality. And I was talking to so many who said, you know, you can kind of, you can tell by the way people carry themselves. And I think that's true. So thank you, you're a different caliber and a different breed. And we very much appreciate the fact that you've landed here. And once again, saying thank you for your service seems like nothing because you've, you've really seen a lot that we have never seen and ever will. But thank you for being here and working with us.
Just to echo the same thing, that I love being able to get the chance to work with, with you guys, veterans. And however I can support along the way. And this morning, each, everybody that attended got a little challenge coin that had Yamhill County on the back and each branch, including space. Score. On, on the other side. So it's really, I love looking for ways to be able to support all of our employees, but especially veterans. So thank you, guys, for your service to the country and continued service to where you live.
With that, we'll get into a recognition of the employees that work for the county that are veterans. We have Brett Adamsky, Danielle Hall, Michael King, Lane Croker, Adam McMahon, Cassandra Purdue, Jacob Phillips, Jacob Rex, Zaragoza Rodriguez, Philip Shatten, Tyler Tegger, Matthew Twitchell, Lane Gravely, Linda Jensen, Gary Warnock, and Brendan McCoy.
Mark Lago, Gordon Jaden, Jackie Blanchard, our own Ken Huffer, Greg Jones, Beverly Kodak, Jason Mitchell, Errol Dorgy, Norman Olson, Brian Embry, Byron Schur, Jerry Wilson, Brant Van Sullen, and Luke Sowers.
Kevin Pierce, Baowen, Josh Armstrong, Carl Biggs, Robert Beal, Jason DeForest, Nestor Martinez Zarzosa, Tony Mode, Mike Kemper, Ron Pierce, Charlene Montoya, Marcus Gomez, Nicholas Humphries, and Rose Inkles.
Thank you for that. And thank you all that have served our country and now are serving our county as employees. We really do appreciate it. Which brings us to our public comment now. If you do have a public comment, please fill out the tan cards. I know we do have some public comment for some agenda items, so that will be separate. As we get to that agenda item, make sure that you raise your hand when we get to that. And I'll slow down just a little bit as we get to those, just to make sure that we can catch everybody. If you are online, make sure you raise your virtual hand to give general public comment. And if you could do that now, that would be great. First up in the room, I'm going to call up Jim Galba. If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name's Jim Galba. I live off of Northeast Norton Lane at 675, Northeast Norton Lane. I do have a map here printed from the Yamhill County webpage. It's a GIS map. I'd like to give all three of you a copy. So this is me. Here's the hospital. This is yours. Me, Hospital Norton Lane.
Okay.
Me, Hospital Norton Lane. So on my side of Norton Lane, it's all labeled northeast, all the way up north, even on the map. But county has me as southeast.
Hang on one, one second. Can you add?
Did you guys hear what I said?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyways, so I'm running into a lot of issues with deliveries and whatnot with the OLCC, trying to get things situated with them and licensing on the property. And also, I'm concerned with emergency services. What are they going to do if called and I report southeast Norton Lane? Will they go towards the hospital? Things like that. So that's what I'm up against there.
Have you reached out to any county department yet?
I have. And so has the OLCC and the U.S. Postal Service. The postmaster here in town has also tried to get this rectified and to no avail as of yet.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have your contact information.
Well, I wrote down north.
Can you write down your?
I wrote it down.
An email address? Can you, can you leave us with an email address?
Sure.
And we'll hit that.
Just write it down.
Just write it down before you leave so that we can get back in touch with you.
No problem.
We can find you. If we can find you.
But if you head, if you headed the address stated with the county, you're going to go toward the hospital.
That's why I figured an email address is probably a better bet.
Again, just a reminder, if you're online, raise your virtual hand now, please. If you have public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Rebecca Wallace.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This public comment is for the board.
Name an address, please.
Rebecca Wallace Newberg.
Thank you.
97132. Public comment for the Board of Commissioners. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Rebecca Wallace, and I'm here today because of the actions of Commissioner David King have created a serious public safety concern for our county. And the public deserves accountability. Last week, Commissioner King posted a message on social media encouraging residents to track and report federal immigration enforcement activity. Actually, it was yesterday, I believe. He included a list of elected officials he claimed were standing together with him in that message. One of the people listed was a sworn law enforcement officer who also serves our country in the United States Coast Guard. This morning, that same official clarified in writing that he never gave consent for his name to be used. He stated that he did not authorize his inclusion, and he made it clear that he does not support any action that interferes with law enforcement operations. He warned that such interference endangers officers by standards and the communities they serve. Despite that, when Commissioner King was asked right before this meeting whether that officer supported his message, Commissioner King started, nodded yes, and then told, told me to go ask him. We now know that that statement was not true. Commissioner King's public encouragement for residents to monitor or track ICE activity is already dangerous. Federal officers operate in high-risk environments. Local deputies are already facing increased threats as shown by the recent shooting where two patrol vehicles were struck by gunfire. Adding confusion, misinformation, and false claims of support from law enforcement only increases the risks faced by officers on the ground. When misinformation is tied to law enforcement, the consequences are not political, they are physical. Officers can be harmed, the public can be harmed, federal operations can be compromised. Commissioner King has a responsibility to communicate truthfully and faithfully and to avoid rhetoric that escalates risk. Instead, he chose to publish inaccurate information, attach a law enforcement officer's name without permission, and then double down in this meeting when asked directly for clarification. Mind you, they have DPSST certifications, and he is also subject to the UCMJ. You may not know what the military UCMJ is, but you really don't want to mess around with that. This behavior is not only irresponsible, it places law enforcement officers and members of the public in danger. It undermines trust, and it damages the credibility of this board. He speaks continualistically with national news media, with our local mainstream media in Portland. As a commissioner for, speaking for Yamhill County, you continuously say that, that your opinions and thoughts are the, the general consensus of the board. And so a lot of people think Yamhill County is, is against lawful immigration and thinks that, you know, we were against ICE here in Yamhill County. And, and that needs to be made clear that this board as a whole does not hold the same position as Commissioner King does. Because that is the perception that Yamhill County is now garnering all over the state and across the United States. And I urge this board to address this matter formally and make it clear that political messaging must never come at the expense of officer safety or public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, and just as a reminder, if you have general public comment, raise your virtual hand. Up next in the room, we have Melody McMaster. Name and address, please.
Melody McMaster. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Did you know that Utah, I just read in the paper this week, that Utah is planning to build 2,600 miles of new paved trails along with 500 existing ones? According to the Utah Department of Transportation, that trail network will connect 208 towns and cities, and 95% of Utah residents will live within a mile of it. So why is it here in Yamhill County, where the county already owns the land, we can't even have a safe, multi-use trail connecting Yamhill, Carlton, and Gaston? I had a conversation with Commissioner Johnston, and I do appreciate all your public hearings that you, I mean, public.
Got what the chair?
Yeah, thank you. You have every month, very well appreciated. But he told me that he would require every farmer who owns land adjacent to the trail to approve it before he considered moving forward. I hope I got your words right. Not that it is required by law, but that was important to him. He also told me that farmers' rights outweigh everybody else's rights to have a trail. And that means that if 110,000 people in Yamhill County wanted this trail, it still wouldn't happen. Now, I'm confident that Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Sterrett have good relationships with these farmers because every election season, I see huge signs out in their fields supporting the two of you. Probably not this next election because I know that you're not running. But I have noticed that because I do live out in that area. So it makes me wonder just like how much financial support you've been given from these farmers. Now, you are asking maybe what farmers? Well, on the petition, it was Jim Julie, Ben Mark, Corey, and John Van Dyke, Lee Shreppel, BJ Matthews, Gordon Droomgul, Celine and Greg McCarthy, Chris Matson, Tom Hammer, Alice Sitten, Mary Ellis, and Tim Pfeiffer, and John Weiser. These are the farmers who petitioned the county for reassurances about their property. I don't know if any discussion has ever been done by any of the three of you about the trail and listened to their concerns as well as, you know, sharing the pros of having a trail. I know that I'm from a family of farmers and that I am part of a first generation that none of us continued that profession. So knowing that, that trails increase property values, something that could matter to their children and grandchildren someday if farming isn't the path they choose. When I asked Commissioner, Commissioner Johnston whether it's safe to drive on Yamhill County roads during spraying season, he said that there could be a reason for concern because of spray drift. Because I'm thinking, okay, not only do I have to worry about my, the car is hitting me now, there could be a chance of spray drift. They're similar to the concerns if there was a trail. Commissioner Sterrett, how am I supposed to ride my bike safely from Yamhill, Carlton, Yamhill to Gaston? Is there, have you done anything? In fact, during your years as an elected official, have you done anything to improve the safety of bicyclists and runners, walkers in our, in our county, especially in that area? Any projects that you have encouraged? I, again, being business oriented, we want to see our businesses thrive. Businesses like the Carlton Bakery, Carlton Corners, Main Street Market, and Delhi Carlton Coffee Company, Scroggins Creek Coffee, and Valley Market Four, to name a few, all of which would probably see increased sales from trail visitors. The thought that's really hard to overcome is that two commissioners can stop something with so much potential? A project that would boost our local economy, promote health and safety, and bring people together, all while the majority of Yamhill County residents support it. Thank you, Bubba King and Kit Johnston, for listening attentively to me today. I always appreciate that from the both of you. I'm going to try to say something maybe next week that will hold your attention as well. Commissioner Sterrett. But thank you again for your time today.
Yeah, we're not going to be here.
Oh.
Next year.
But you're welcome to come.
Well, as a reminder, December 4th, 7:00 p.m. in this room, we'll have the public hearing, the first public hearing before the planning commission. So make sure you're there.
Oh, I'd love to be, but as I've shared with you at our get-together, I won't be here, but I'm going to try to be online. So thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you, Melody.
For coming.
Before we go. All right, I don't see any public comment online, so we will move on. We have Department Updates is F, there is none. G is Work Session, there is none.
And Chair?
Yeah.
Because I know we kind of went through calendaring really quickly, but in light of what was just discussed about our upcoming schedules for formal sessions, I thought it might be good to just notify the public, and we'll make sure we get things posted as well. But there won't be a formal session next Thursday because of an association of Oregon County's conference. And then there also won't be the following week because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So the next formal session is that first weekend.
December 4th.
December 4th.
Yep. Okay. Cool, thank you. H is Consent Agenda. I would make a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously, thank you. I is Old Business, there is none, which brings us to J. This is where I'll take it a little bit easy. I know we have some comments on item I-8, so we'll kind of keep an eye out for any comments in the audience or online as we get close to it. J-1 is Consideration of Approval of Amendment Number 1 to an Agreement Between Yamhill County and Northwest Christian Church for the Zone After School Program, extending the term dates through December 31st, 2026. If we have any questions, Joya is joining us.
Good morning.
And Forrest is here as well.
Forrest is here if you have any. Forrest is here if you have any questions for him with Northwest Christian Church.
I have no, I have no question.
I have no questions either, Commissioner.
Well, that was easy.
Don't go too far.
I would make a motion to approve. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item I-2 is Consideration of Approval of Amendment Number 2 to Agreement Number GR2507GA between Yamhill County and Chamecada Community College, Board Order 24-066 for the Early Childhood Educator Educational Development Program effective through December 31st, 2026.
Move approval.
Motion's been made. Is there any further discussion or comments on this one?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
A couple of things if we could clarify.
We also have a representative online from Chamecada, Carla Hale is here.
Okay, I do have some questions.
Okay.
So if, if you can just kind of give us the, the base code, I'm looking at sort of the return on investment piece of this. And just had some questions about one of the, one of the asks. Well, first of all, the proposed change for three-year, for year three participants. So we really, as a board, looked at this as a fast track to get folks into the workforce. And we made it easy with, easier with the stipend and with the way the classes were structured and the whole childcare component. But I'm seeing that now there's a more of an eye towards moving it towards something that is, is going to be a longer duration. And I'm, I'm wondering if, not, not as an educator, because I don't know. So I'm, I'm assuming that the folks at Chamecada know that this might work. I'm also thinking this might make it harder for folks to get certification and, and get to work.
And I will turn that over to Carla because this is her. She should be right there. There she is.
Okay, thanks, Carla, appreciate your being here.
Hi, and thank you for allowing me to join virtually and answer questions about these changes. So I appreciate that question. And when we initially designed this program, we were targeting individuals who are already working in childcare, maybe home childcare systems or in our partner childcare systems, and helping them to improve their skills, get certifications so that they could work in licensed childcare centers as lead teachers. What we found after running this program for two years over the summer was that even in a 14-week period, many of the targeted audience that we were trying to reach were not able to take advantage of this program because they went back to their, even if they took the summer off, which many of our partners were not willing to give their employees the whole summer off. They needed them. As you know, we are desperate for childcare workers. So they weren't able to give them the whole summer off and allow them to go full-time. And they also were returning back to their centers earlier than our program was finishing. And so there were many that opted out of it who were interested because the program continued on into September when many of our school district childcare preschool promise programs were starting back up. So what we found is we weren't actually enrolling the, the intended personnel into our program. And what we also acknowledged is that the 14-week intensive program for those that were enrolling was often proving to be too intensive, and they were getting burned out and were not able to, they were missing classes, they were getting sick, they were not able to complete in the rate that we were hoping. So with feedback from our students from both cohorts, with feedback from our instructors, we really made a conscious effort when this cohort finished up to address some of the challenges that we faced over the last two years and really come up with a plan that better met the needs of the students, that better met the needs of the employers we're attempting to serve with this program. And I think the three-term program, the way that looks is they would take two courses, spring term. Those would be remote, and so they would be doing remote synchronous classes in the evening so they could continue to work full-time. In the summer, they would still be eight weeks of intensive courses, so the majority of their courses would still be completed in the summer. And then the last two courses would be completed in the fall. And one of those is the practicum course where they would actually be doing their placements. And we also ran into challenges finding placements for them in the summer because many of our partners do not run programs during the summer. And so they would be able to stay in their employment and do their practicums in those sites rather than. rather than stepping out for another term. And so I think we have designed a program for this year that just is responsive to the needs that we have been hearing from both our students and our employers.
Thank you. I have a couple of other questions. The, the proposed changes would be to add salary and fringe benefits for grant support specialist advising and recruiting. And that is a proposal of $110,000. So can you just maybe flush that out a bit, Carla?
Sure, thank you for that question. And that is a big change and we recognize that. So under the current budget, we only budgeted for faculty and instructional coaches. So there is no funding to support the recruitment, the orientation, the onboarding, the ongoing advising support, the facilitation of the stipends and the new, what we also propose, which is childcare stipends. And what we have found, and many of you heard about in this last summer, was that there was some challenges with communication, with making sure that students were were clear about what they were signing up for, what the expectations were. We also, I think, would like to be more proactive about our recruiting in Yamhill County and making sure that, that we're serving those employers and those students in Yamhill County. I, I think we will do a much better job of filling those slots with people who are, again, the targeted audience we were hoping to serve. Without personnel to do that, it, our, our full-time faculty was the one who was trying to facilitate that. And they just don't have the capacity to do all of these pieces and for it to be at like a one person who interacts. So we had multiple people who were trying to communicate, which caused a lot of confusion about things like when stipends would be paid, what to expect in terms of the courses and the times that they were in class. And so I think this position is really critical to making sure that students have the experience that we want them to have, that it's seamless, that they know exactly what's coming, when, that they are supported, that they have one person to talk to who they, that can help them, you know, identify resources when they face challenges, all of those things. And, and I think that that will really make the difference in the experience for the students in this last year of the program.
I have another question if nobody else does. So you were referencing the fact that there were a lot of the students who had gone to work in Marion and Poe County, or there have been a number of them. And really our focus is we want, we want to be able to sort of supplant what's going on in, in our own county. So I think you already addressed that, but that was another one of my concerns. And then also the, it's going to be a separate stipend for childcare. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we had hoped last year that we would be able to support the students with childcare onsite. And we ran into all kinds of complications with that model. We are not actually set up even through our Child Development Center here in Salem to offer drop-in childcare. We're not licensed for that. We also did not have the appropriate facilities that would allow for longer-term childcare. And what our students really need is full-day childcare. Drop-in would not have been appropriate for their needs. And so to better serve and support those needs, we would be paying for those who have children and who are paying childcare, we would provide them with a stipend to help pay for their own identified childcare while they're, just for the summer while they're in classes, in person, four days a week.
Thank you.
Joya, do you know what's left in this grant?
So they have spent $318,618.34. We had given them $76386,000. So there's a little bit over 50% left.
So we're talking, we're going to spend $110,000 of that remaining for a grant writer to bring more funding into the program?
No, not for a grant writer. I, Carla, I didn't know.
So let me, yeah, let me better explain that. So it's for a grant coordinator. So this person would actually be supporting the students for this last year of the Certificus Program. So they would be recruiting, they would be orienting, they would be working with them to get enrolled and registered. And then they would support them during the classes as a navigator, making sure they had what they needed to be successful. They would be interfacing with the college in terms of making sure the stipends were processed and that they got to the students, the childcare, all of those behind-the-scenes processes that have to happen in order for the students to have a, an experience where it isn't falling on their shoulders, right? To try to navigate all of those things. And we know that that's one of the barriers specifically to students, these, this population of students who are usually first generation. They, they have not had a lot of experience with college systems. And so they really need a dedicated person to be able to navigate those things and to help them understand the processes and how to get through those.
And the cost of that is $110,000.
Yeah, that does include salary and benefits, yes.
What's our timeframe to get this done in a timely manner so it doesn't disrupt?
So Carla, you'd be starting that first semester coming in January, is that correct?
That is correct. Our students in this cohort would start in January.
What is that date?
Or I'm sorry, they would start in spring, in March.
Oh, March.
But we would start recruiting for them very soon, probably in January because we have had less success recruiting and getting people into the system, into the, into the program, because we haven't had someone who is working specifically on that. So that person would need to start recruiting as soon as possible.
How bad would it be for you guys if we delayed this till December 4th and decided then? I, I have reservations about spending another $110,000 on something that I feel like within all of the resources that Chomekada has, that they can't figure this out internally or at a, at, maybe at a contract rate with somebody else. So I, I guess I'd like to dig this a little bit deeper into this with Chomekada and just see if we can't figure something out. But then know that we'd have this before us, on December 4th and make a decision.
And there are resources at community colleges, like the Student Support Services Department. And I, I don't know what Chomekada has here. My past experience in, in higher ed, we had Student Support Services and they specifically worked with this type of population that were first generation.
And, and I will say that has been how we have been trying to facilitate this program is with the current college resources, both in Yamhill and in Salem. And that has proven to be very challenging for the students to navigate. And so I, I really want to emphasize that I think for us, we are hoping to enroll 30 students in this last cohort. I really think that the success of their, those students, the success of the recruitment, being able to get 30 students and, and to keep them going, making sure we're, the students are the right fit for the program is going to take a considerable investment of time on the part of the college. And I'm happy to continue that conversation and to try to, you know, provide more information or discuss it. If we need to wait until December, that's fine. I'm happy to do that. But I'll be honest, as the person who has had to oversee much of this, I do not believe that we would be able to run another cohort without this employee. I don't, I don't know that we would be able to continue to try to facilitate this without at least some support. We are currently not paying for any of that out of this grant. And it has made a negative impact on the ability for us to do what we said we were going to do.
So. If I remember correctly, part of the, it was actually itemized that marketing was called out and there was a dollar amount associated with the marketing for this particular program. So my question is, is was that not sufficient? So now we're talking about, you know, adding an FTE to this specific. But that was already called out in, in the original contract. And I also think at some point, we need to acknowledge that we can do only so much hand-holding. And I know there were challenges last, last time. There were folks that really did struggle for a variety of other reasons. And I, I really appreciate some of the nonprofits that helped out in our community. But I, I think what I want to do is at some point, we have to be realistic about, no matter how much hand-holding or how much money we're throwing at, you can only lead a horse to water so much. And how much are we going to, to try to get folks across the finish line? And, and is, is this really going to be the, the, the magic bullet? I, I don't know.
I will say, we did not spend most of the marketing budget. The way that we have been marketing is, and I'll tell you, we had over 100 interested applicants in the cohort this summer. Weeding through those, having specific interviewing, like we really need to be able to make sure that they are the right fit for this program. Because what we saw is many of them, they came to the orientations, but when they found out they had to come full-time during the summer, they, they did not persist in that interest. And so there is the piece of just finding the, the, the students and, and then orienting them in a way that, that makes it very clear what they're signing up for and that they're ready and they're eligible. And that includes reaching out and partnering with those employers in Yamhill. And that is a considerable effort that we have not been able to, we just don't have the personnel that, not in the budget and not at Chomekada that can do that. And so I think there's potential to compromise perhaps and, and, and think about it as maybe not, maybe none or all, but maybe somewhere in the middle as well. And I'm happy to consider that as well, but yeah.
Chair, I made a motion and I'm happy to rescind it. If you need a little bit more time to maybe meet with Carla and to go over this, I understand what is she saying, just having to modify the program based on the needs of students and the teachers and admin and so on. And I agree with you that I'd like to hear a little bit more and maybe independently about that position, that FTE. But I think Carla is right with having to, most people who, that are attending have never attended college. And, you know, that can definitely be daunting to ask to where to sign up, how to go, FASFA forms, all of the fun things. So I'm, I definitely see what Carla's trying to say, but I would definitely not mind rescinding my motion so that we had a little bit more time to dig into this.
Okay, I appreciate that. Carla, I got another question for you. What, what I'm trying to do, and then if we do end up signing, delaying this, the conversations that I'd like to have is I need to be able to value this $110,000. So I guess maybe a follow-up question just right now. If we fund this FTE position, what value, when this grant funding is expended, what value does that, what value stays with Chomekada? Does this program stay? Does Chomekada start funding this program? Did we get at least something started to where there's value after this grant is gone? What happens to this FTE?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. And I think what my hope is, is that by having this dedicated person to interface with students and with the employers in Yamhill County, that we will establish as part of this third year, like a specific program that is available that we would continue. Now, we would continue that without probably the, the amount of support that these students are receiving in terms of their stipends, but that we would continue to offer this certificate program in Yamhill on a continuous basis. And the coordinator that we are, we already are hoping to identify would be someone that the college would continue to support as part of like, because now we would be collecting the FTE for those students. And we will have established that there's a need, that we have a consistent need of at least 20 students who are going to be entering this because we've done that for now, two years in a row. So I think there's, the value that will be added is that we will have created the partnerships with our employers out there, that this is a program that they can support their employees to skill up and to get certified and that it will work with their schedules. And that there will be continued even support from the employers. We know that the registered apprenticeship model is something that we are working on. We are actually in a pilot with CCRNR in Marion County. There's one also running in Yamhill County that might continue to support, like we could overlap those programs in the future, which would support the employers to pay their employees to go through training.
Okay, so I'm not going to put you on the spot right now. I would like to delay this, but I definitely would like to reach out to you guys and, and we'll have an answer by December 4th. But what I'd like to do is get a commitment from Chomekada to at least for me to value this, that this program runs at least two year, two more years. And I understand that the parameters would change, but I want this, I need to see value in this 110 FTE that we're going to do for the, the remainder of these grant funds. And I want to see if Chomekada can actually give more than a hope. Maybe we can actually look and see what that is to actually have this FTE for at least two more years after this, so.
And, and I just, just have one more question. So the next time we, we talk, and I've had some conversations with Joya. So there was, I asked you for the dollar figure and I think you gave me that yesterday, per student, what this was actually penciling out to be, what, what did this?
If I just did the quick math on it, it was $29,000 per student. There were 18 students, Carla, correct me here, that 18 students, there were eight in the first class and, excuse me, eight in the first class and eight, 18 in the second class that are either graduated or will be completing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so 26?
With a capacity of 30?
No, coming up.
Coming up.
So we had, the capacity was at 20 and then 25.
But have a capacity of 30, did I understand that correct?
Yeah, for this final group, yes. And going forward, it would be 30.
And one more question to, just to consider is that you did mention that you didn't use all the marketing money that was, was designated in the grant. And my question would be, if that money wasn't used and yet we're saying, well, we couldn't get to everybody, I would imagine that having had the funds to do that piece and now saying, well, if we had a dedicated person. So I'm not, I'm kind of seeing a little bit of a disconnect there. And I am concerned about that, that 110 for, for an FTE, which includes benefits. And that, that's the question. And then I also have some concerns about the fact that we do have students who are not working in Yamhill County and that was the object of the game. So, but thank you, you've put a lot into this and I don't want to see it go away.
Yep. I, I think we, we're, I would definitely want to come to a resolution. I, I just want to see if we can't work out some parameters here to see if we can't get a little extra value in this, since we're changing to actually hire a $110,000 FTE. So you rescinded, I would make a motion that we put this off until December 4th. Okay.
So it'll just come forward as old business on the December 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Carla.
Thank you Carla.
Thank you.
Thanks Joya.
Thank you. I'll, I'll get together with Carla and we'll, we'll talk about next steps and what we need to do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you Carla.
All right, moving on to item I three is consideration of approval amendment number one to an agreement between Yamhill County and SAR Enterprises DBA Communications Northwest Board Order 25-107 to include the design and replacement of the microwave network for an additional $997,685, increasing the total contract amount from $400,000 to $1,397,685. And, is the sheriff? There he is right there, I was looking in the back. Right through ya. Right through ya.
That chair's lows.
Yes. Sheriff's joining us if anybody has any questions.
Um, I have not. I think this is the project that we, um, submitted to Senator Merkley's office for a CIP. We didn't get through. Um, this is a, a need that has been happening. We've had to repair this, these microwaves with eBay parts. So I, I definitely think that it's worth the investment that the sheriff is wanting to put in. So with that, I would move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Made the sheriff getting that care for nothing.
Thanks for making the trip.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item I four is consideration of approval of grant agreement number TCP dash 27 dash 57 between Yamhill County and the Criminal Justice Commission to support the Adult Drug Court in the amount of 243,404 effective upon full execution through November 30th, 2027.
Well worth the funding. I, um, move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None for me.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I five is consideration of approval of a grant agreement, number TCP dash 27 dash 58 between Yamhill County and the Criminal Justice Commission to support Juvenile Drug Court in the amount of 175,844 effective upon full execution through November 30th, 2027.
Move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item I six is consideration of approval of a grant agreement, number TCP dash 27 dash 59 between Yamhill County and the Criminal Justice Commission to support Mental Health Court in the amount of 87,887 dollars effective upon full execution through November 30th, 2027.
I move approval.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. I seven's consideration of approval of the modification of agreement between Yamhill County and the Summit Strategies Government Affairs LLC for consulting services in the not to exceed amount of 125,900 retroactive to July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. I would move approval. Is there any further discussion?
None.
None for me. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to item I eight. If you have public comment, please raise, raise your virtual hand. If you're in the audience, make sure that you fill out the comment card. Uh, item I eight is discussion of transient lodging tax, TLT, brought to us by Commissioner King. And I will say right out of the gate, we do have, uh, Paul Fournay, who is a Tillamook County Commissioner that would like to give public comment on this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, thanks for giving me the opportunity. I just wanted to, um, I talked to Ababa at one of our AOC events and we talked about TLT quite a bit. I just wanted to give you his perspective from, um, from Tillamook County's perspective on how the TLT has benefit, uh, continues to benefit us and how we use it here. Just to give you a little background, for us, um, you know, our timber revenues dropped. Uh, but by the way, our, our general fund budget's a lot smaller than yours. So, but, um, our timber revenue, uh, has been stagnant at about four, four and a half million, if we're lucky, every year. Um, conversely, our TLT revenue, uh, is about $7 million. So for us, it's become a, a significant source of revenue for the county. Um, what we do is we, and with the 70 30, currently there's a 70 30 split. And if I'm sure you understand what that is, but 70% must go towards tourism related, uh, either promotion of facilities. And I'll talk more on that. And the 30% we can use for what we want. And what we've done is, um, since the inception is that 30% goes straight to our road department, which helps with, um, when there's fluctuations in federal and state funding. So that 30% could be used for a sheriff's office, for a jail, for anything the county would want to use it for. In our case, uh, public works needed a boost years ago, and that, and that was part of the deal. So technically our visitors are actually paying quite a bit for road maintenance. We, the, the other 70%, we actually have a destination management organization that we contract with. But we've, we've started and we're starting this year to be more creative with how that money is used. And, and it looks like perhaps at the state level, we'll get more of a, a percentage of that or, or different wording so we can use it for more of the impact. So we don't use very much for marketing at all. Uh, just like, just like Yamhill County, people come there for the, for the vineyards and everything else. Down here, they come for the coast. They're already coming. What we use it for is to, um, the, one of the things we do is we, we use it to build facilities that the locals also enjoy. I just, yesterday, we had given money to the local pickleball association for lighting, um, in the fair, in the, one of the fair building, excuse me, fair buildings. Um, we own the building, the county owns the building, but the association asks for some money to put new lighting in. Um, it benefits obviously our building, so we're able to do that. We spent the money from TLT on that. It also benefits our high school because the tennis team uses that facility as well. Uh, the pickleball people hold events and tournaments there which bring visitors in, which is the nexus we needed to be able to use TLT. But basically any fairground operations or parks and rec, easily falls under the TLT. So it gives you, um, a funding source that you, you don't have to dig any general fund to use. Um, our short-term rental, uh, program, the licenses for that, there's a fee attached for that. Um, and I believe we, we used, we use 400, we take $400,000 or it creates $400,000 that we then use for our housing commission to give out as grants for, uh, middle income and, and workforce housing. So those grants are going like for the last, you know, last mile funding for a lot of big developments. And, and that's been very successful for us. So, um, that's a side benefit of having the TLT and having short-term rental, um, licenses. Because the people i- i- in unincorporated, uh, Yamhill County, I'm sure are already doing Airbnb and short-term rentals and the, and they're impacting county services. If you asked the sheriff before he left, uh, if he had to guess how many accidents or visitor related, uh, people from out of the, uh, out of the county might surprise you. Um, so we see it as a benefit of, of, of kind of having those folks pay for their impacts. I don't have much long to say, but we, what, what some of the things we've done with it is, um, of course trails, I heard someone earlier speaking about trails. We've used it to, uh, fund trail rehabilitation, uh, stairways. We ADA accessibility to places and beaches. Um, the YMCA bought the bowling alley. We helped out with that, um, which is also used locally as a, kind of like a daycare for kids here locally, but visitors use it. So again, finding creative ways, it's not just about promoting tourism. We use it, um, to help local residents out. Fire departments will, if they need a piece of equipment, specialized piece of equipment to deal with accidents that are majority, in our cases are visitors, we can, we can use that funding for that. So I just, that, I just want to say that for us, it's a significant tool and a financial tool that's necessary. So we continue to reinvest in it. Um, one of the things is if we can get the legislative to change the percentage, we're not going to abandon the visitor industry. In fact, we're going to double down. We make so much money off campgrounds. Um, we make half a million from the state just because we have county-owned campgrounds. That comes out of the DMV, um, RV registration fund. And then, and so every campground we build, um, we make that money, plus we make of the fees for the campground, if it's county-owned. And then we make TLT off of that as well, 10% off the top of that. Our cities pay, pay us 1% for their, um, TLTs. I'm not familiar with Newburgh or McMinnville or any of your cities. I'm sure they have some sort of resident, um, um, transient lodging tax. I'm not sure though. But anyways, I just wanted to give you guys a background for how for Tillamook County. Um, we see it as a partnership with our short-term rentals. Um, it's been rocky. There's a lot of rhetoric going around, but we actually, um, are putting a focus on helping, um, maybe do some festivals in the off-season to get people to come camp at our campgrounds and stay in STRs and help local businesses out. So anyway, if you have any questions about it, uh, whether online here or offline, um, please feel free to reach out. And if our, um, ours, ours STR are run through the community development office, if you need any help, you can contact our director, Sarah Absher. Um, if she, if you need them, if you decide to go with this and you want a model of what, how we're doing it or a model of our, a copy of our ordinance, we'd be happy to get that to you. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Paul. Thank you.
Thanks. See you guys at AOC.
Any questions for Paul?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, can you promote the next one? Sean, uh, name an address, please.
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that, but everything froze for a second. And, uh, my name's Sean Cleve. Uh, I am a Salem resident, uh, South Salem off of Battle Creek Road. I represent the Taxpayers Association of Oregon. They asked me to speak today. Um, I have been doing government affairs work for 25 years in the Salem area, uh, mostly at the state level. Um, I just want to, uh, urge a abundance of caution as you approach this. I know that, uh, the transportation and lodging tax, uh, in, at the state level has been an exceptionally controversial, uh, uh, conversation. Uh, it does promote tourism. Um, but I, I really want the commission to consider as you have these conversations, uh, the impact to your citizens. Uh, our, our incomes are not keeping up with the cost of living. Um, and I guess if I can wax poetically for a minute, I, I have strong concerns with any government entity describing taxes as a income, uh, producing, uh, opportunity. Um, we, we really need to focus on balancing, uh, the needs of our citizens against, uh, the cost that we raise, whether that's an economic model that's in the private sector or the government sector. Um, so with that, I would just certainly encourage you to reach out to the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association. And given the economic background of your wine assoc- uh, wine industry, please, uh, reach out also to the wine industry. Uh, they have a, a exceptional staff there that can give you information regarding economic modeling. Uh, the last thing we want to do from a tax policy is chase a loss uh, and actually implement something that discourages people from visiting Yamhill County. And with that, I'll provide any answers to questions you might have.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Sean.
Any questions?
No.
Nope. Thank you, Sean.
Appreciate it.
Anybody in the audience? Seeing none? Okay. Commissioner?
Yeah. So, um, I thank you guys for, for listening to this. And, and I've had lots of informal conversations with many of the stakeholders here in Yamhill County from owners of boutique hotels to, um, GMs of boutique hotels, our DMOs, um, restaurants, wineries, you name it. And, um, they all have varying opinions on what it should be, obviously. Um, the, the, the fee associated with this, but there is a resounding, yes, we need this. Um, and very supportive of it. So, um, and including our Airbnb and short-term rental hosts as well. So there is an appetite for this as to, uh, Sean had just spoke to be careful. And, and I have even reached out to, um, Orla, the, kind of the watchdog group of this. And they, they say yes, so long as the, the, the member organization, the members of the organization are, are willing to participate and there is a need, we will be supportive of that. And so, uh, I wanted to reference that before we get kicked off here. And really just say, the last time that this came to the board, I believe in 2019, 2020. And, um, for how I would like to structure this, what I'm proposing, uh, we've, could have collected 8.6 million dollars. And 6 million of that would have gone to marketing our facilities and 2.6 towards the county general fund. Now, I know that you guys know quite a bit about this, so I won't, um, go into the nuts and bolts of it, but, um, really the fact is, is that this is a fee on the visitors, right? And if we are going to, uh, you know, it back in May, we talked about wanting that general fund, the ending fund balance to be hovering around that $5 million. Um, and with the government, federal government and state government clawing back some of that as our agencies are being told to prepare budgets for 2.5% cutback cuts and 5% cutbacks. It's going to give us less services, right? So there was once upon a time, a group that was also trying to get this, uh, through with the Board of Commissioners, the Tran-, uh, Yamhill County Tourism and Economic Development Committee. Um, and they've done a lot of the work, um, as a, you know, to be a committee and to stand up already. There's bylaws in place and so on. Now they've stood down since they were told no. But, um, I think that some of this work can be done. Any questions? Oh, okay. Um, so the structure that I'm recommending, but really, um, I'm open to any of the conversation for, to you guys, um, with you guys, uh, for any sort of percentage. I think that it would, uh, behoove us to have that conversation of what would be an appropriate number. But for non-incorporated area or for unincorporated areas of Yamhill County, I think a 9% would right-size the, um, the competition towards the cities. Um, so if we're talking about a, a short-term rental or in at the ground or any of those, um, areas, they are not, they are currently operating. It's not paying anything. And, and, um, as one hotelier put it, it got a 10%, a 9% uh, advantage now. Each, uh, not every city has a DMO or a, or a, um, TLT in place, but the, the ones that do are right around that nine to 10%. And so we can put an overlay on top of that to a 2%. And again, I, this is just a number that I would like to start off and, and have the conversation with. I'm happy to, to, to really work within whatever you'd like. And on one of the, uh, documents that I sent you guys, there was a table, um, that puts us at 1.6 million annually to, uh, for visitor paid, uh, revenue now. Uh, and the things that we can do with that, I think are, are very impressive. Our county, um, parks are, we've just passed a master plan with no plan to fund it. And as Commissioner Fournia said, we are able to, um, to use this to, to build that infrastructure of our parks. Um, and in, we are currently having the conversation of putting, uh, parking fees at some of our parks or, or raising the fees of our, of the infrastructures there, the gazebos or, or wherever you'd like that. So, um, and that committee, or we can do it a little bit more, um, internally, uh, to have that discussion on what we would spend it on and where we would want it. It, um, we can have it internally, but I find it very helpful to have the stakeholders at the table for those. Um, obviously, uh, you guys know about the 20, the 70 30 split, so I won't go into that too much more. But, uh, our visitor economy exceeds 120 million annual rep visitor spending and supports nearly 2,000 local jobs. The wine industry alone generates 687 million annually and 132 million in wages. And that's 6,700 direct or indirect jobs that benefit Yamhill County. The city of McMinnville alone records 38.9 million in travel spending, supporting 430 jobs and 1.4 million in local tax revenue. So I think that it is important for us to keep those in mind. And, and as we are talking about investing into our parks, our fairgrounds, um, our other areas, you know, it is important that we look at this in the lens of that Yamhill County pays for the, you know, our, our residents, our taxpayers pay for those services. And, uh, you know, if the sheriff was here, we talked about 24% of our DUIs are from out of county. Um, the amount of, you know, whether you're, you're staying in town and then going to the unincorporated into the county, you're using our road system, you're using our infrastructure and our citizens are paying for that right now. And I think it would be, I, I think it would be fair to right-size that into stop making our working families carry the burden of our travel economy and bring it, uh, have that source just for that. Um, and then the 30%, obviously we can use for public safety, for dog control, infrastructure administration to try to get some of these donkeys out of the ditches. As we keep liking to refer to. Um, now the number of the 1.6 and the forecasting of 3% annual, uh, growth is very conservative. Uh, the, when I came up with the number, the, uh, visit McMinnville helped me with that. Um, that was before the Fairfield in, uh, Mc, in Newburgh was open and before the Dundee Hotel was open. And obviously I know of at least three, if not four more hotels being built in the next five years. So, um, there's quite a bit of room for growth into this as well. So I've offered lots of information. You guys have it, but. So I've offered lots of information. You guys have it, but this is my point of view. I, I ran on this and I think that it was, it's important for us to have this conversation. So I will, looking at my notes, make sure I'm not missing anything. Would love to hear your guys' perspective on this. And I mean, like I said, I, I know that passports have not been a fan of this. And I haven't brought a lot of stakeholders here today because I would like to bring you in before I use their time and, and ours for that matter. So that's why there's not a lot of stakeholders here or letters of support or so on. These have been informal conversations and Orla has offered to call a meeting of some of those members and who would have a, you know, who would want to say into what this goes to and how it goes. But I know that if you read Consumer Reports in the Alamo Valley, the biggest problem that people don't come or don't come back is that there's nothing to do. So I think that it would be very responsible of us to invest into one of our leading industries and, and, and be able to help support our own infrastructure here.
Either Commissioner King or Ken, do you know the last time that the YCTEDC was set up? What years it operated in? Who was on it? Any, any background information on that?
Um, I think the, the, from what I understand, that group was 2019, 2020 was the last time they stood down. And, and I, I appreciate, I think Commissioner Starett was there. I think their ask at that time was something that I wouldn't be comfortable with supporting as well. I mean, I think they wanted the county to do a lion's share of promoting and grants to other DMOs and so on. So it, it, I, I, when I read their proposal, I don't think that that I would be very supportive of the direction that they were going in. And I don't know when they started. I could get that information for you if you wanted, but but I don't know when they started, but I know they stood down somewhere around that 2019, 2020 when.
Do we have a list somewhere that have who the members were on it?
I don't.
I just like to reach out to them and talk to them individually and.
Yeah, I'm sure we have records on file. I think a lot of the discussions, a lot of this even predates me, but you know. I know Visit McMinnville, a lot of the DMOs were on it. A lot of that has turned over since that group was in, in place. At least the staff was there. I, I'm sure I could figure out a, a couple of more people who are still in town that were having that conversation.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be current, even if they're no longer around the, you know, as long as they have a phone number I can call or whatever, I definitely would like to discuss with them.
And I have Visit McMinnville offered to be here as well to ask some, or if there was questions about DMO. I, I'm personally not really interested in in a DMO. I think that we have some of the best ones in the state here and what we would be doing is more supporting them with the infrastructure for things to do. And as Commissioner Fornia said, and Visit McMinnville has pointed out, when you invest into your local things, there's an 80-20 split of it, right? Locally, 80% of our, of the use is from local people from, and then 20% of the use go, is predominantly from visitors. So when we're talking about if we invest into fairgrounds, ballfields or something like that there, or if we invest into our parks of trail systems of, you know, underutilized property that we have now, you know, the lion's share of that goes towards using right here at home.
So when you went through and put together this proposal, is there any rough idea of what you know of value? So somewhere, somehow, something always has to give. So if this is implemented, I guess I'd want to know what the negative value is of people that would say, you know what, that extra dollar or whatever, I'm not, I'm now not going to come to whatever Airbnb or whatever hotel that was. Is there a, there must be a calculation that we know that it would affect?
Yeah. I mean, I think that when you're looking at prices, I mean, if you're looking at Airbnbs, you know, short-term rentals and so, most of the sites are putting on the full cost of that. There's no, like they're taking away the hidden fees, right? I know when I've stayed at a short-term rental before, you have the $300 a night and then all of a sudden there's four different fees associated with the end and I stayed for two nights.
I'm, I'm more for that value that you, you're, somebody's going to have to, there's going to be assumed value somewhere of a loss.
Sure.
There must be a calculation that.
Yeah. And, and I, I don't know, and we can certainly figure that out. I talked to Lifestyle Properties just this week and Megan is the largest short-term rental operator in Yanhill County and she's very supportive of this. Her homeowners are very supportive of this. And I think again, there's, there's some, there's opinions on whether they would want it to be that percentage and, and, you know, maybe nine is too high. And, and I, I could see the reasoning behind that. There's an, an opinion that, you know, nine kind of right sizes where we're at. So the 2% in the city, I think that even that is very comparable to what other cities and counties are doing around us. So the, the, I don't want to stay in Yanhill County. I'll go stay at the Hamilton in Sherwood because it's a little bit cheaper. I think that those fees are still right on par with each other of our neighbors. So.
Marion County?
I don't know what Marion County's is off the top of my.
They don't have one.
Polk County?
They don't have one.
The major cities in, you know, Salem and so on, they, they also have them.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner King, for bringing this. Couple of things. Well, first, when I was elected, I, I took a pledge, you know, no new taxes. So this for me, right out of the gate is a no. And our favorite tax is on other people. We're looking at other people we can tax. We're not taxing us, so it's an okay tax. I looked at the proposal and there was a lot of reference to the people who come here are accessing our services and it is on the backs of the working families. It seems to be a lot of class warfare in this proposal because it talks about those who have the income to do recreational travel. I will point out that we have a number of universities here and we have parents whose children are going to school here and they can come here and see their children by staying in a, in a short-term rental or in a, an, an unincorporated area of the county or a motel or hotel. So to me, I would dispute the claim that anybody who's traveling has, is bucks up and is therefore not even going to feel this. I think that it is important for us to remember that sometimes people who don't have the money to go fly someplace on vacation are opting to be able to go someplace within our county. I would also challenge the fact that we don't have anything to do here. People come here because we don't have anything to do.
Consumer report, that's not.
Well, I know, but you repeated that and it's been, it's been repeated before. I think that people come here because we do have beautiful scenery and we do have a calm atmosphere. So we don't need amusement parks and any kind of, you know, stuff for people to do. It's the not doing that is attractive. You talked about the 1.6 million dollars that we've left on the table and what we could have done with that money. I have a suggestion. What we could have done with that money is leave it in the pockets of the people who came here. The other thing I would say is that percentage, that nine percentage. So this would be a percentage that we would add, whatever it's two or whatever, on top of, for instance, Newburgh or McMinnville, 9% in Newburgh. So we're adding that on top of, of that particular transit lodging tax. We heard a reference from the Commissioner in Tillamook who talked about they were able to use this taxpayer money for pickleball and trails. In the 11 years that I've, I've been here, this has come up before. I think at the end of the day, people have a finite amount of money that they can spend and there's nothing worse than seeing that sticker shock when you see how much the taxes are added to your nightly lodging. Higher occupancy taxes can lead to higher prices for accommodations, obviously. And that is going to make it more expensive for tourists to, to stay here. So I think as costs rise, the last thing we want to do is add another tax because in Oregon, the one thing we're finding is that people have, have, have had enough of it. And I know you supported, for instance, the gas tax. And to me, if there's a tax, you know, there's never a tax that we're not going to latch on to and jump on. I say we need to live within our means and let people have a few bucks left in their pockets. I'm a hard no right out of the gate.
I saw a, somewhere in this, I don't know if you know what page it owned, but it had all the other cities that have the TLT.
Yeah. I believe it is McMinnville, Newburgh, Carlton, Dayton, off the top of my head. Dan, do you, is there?
Do you know the percentages on those?
Uh, McMinnville, Dan, do you want to come up and?
Newburgh is nine.
Newburgh's nine.
You, you may be able to answer some of these.
I'm trying to get it up on my phone, but it turns out the wifi or the cell service in the basement isn't ideal, but McMinnville's is 10%.
10%.
10, yeah.
Sorry, this is for the record, this is Dan.
Oh, yeah.
Visit McMinnville.
I live in, my name is Dan Gibson. I live in McMinnville.
Thank you, Dan. Carlton, do we know what that one is?
Do you know Carlton's off the top of your head? I think theirs is somewhere around that seven.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's seven and a half, but a shockingly good resource for this, which I was going to bring up is Airbnb's own page is a pretty exhaustive list of what every Oregon municipality adds to the TLT. It's incredibly complicated because cities have, I mean, it, it's different functionally wherever you would go. And kind of, from my perspective, in ideal ways that, because, you know, the different, the consumer doesn't know the difference between. But actually functionally, I was looking earlier as an aside, there are two properties on Airbnb that both advertise as being in McMinnville. And, and I'm sure both of their addresses, when you look up on Google Maps are in McMinnville. One of them does not pay TLT and the other does. And so there is a little bit, from my perspective, from the DMO side, a little bit of inequity there. Because you can travel without this county and, in this county and have a bit of price confusion. I, I would argue personally, obviously, that I think the additive of the TLT reduces some of that price confusing, confusion in this area. Because we're, we're promoting the idea of McMinnville and there are properties that, of course, I think this as, as a person of tourism promotion. So keep that in mind. My professional bias is very much shining here. But there's a property that is not paying into TLT, but benefits from our marketing. Anyway, I'm not going to answer more questions than nobody asked me, but I'm happy to answer. Any questions, somebody does want to ask. Or none at all, either way.
Thank you.
And I would give an example just this morning, if, you know, while we're in the veterans, thanking veterans for this morning of our employees, you know, one of whom is the lead maintenance guy for the fairground. And, and the question was asked by somebody else is, oh, you know, you, you, are you building a lot of things? He said, no, we're, we're putting Band-Aids on things, you know, so the, the budget is certainly there. And, and, and the money that we give either from our economic development fund could go back in, you know, that we give the parks and the fairgrounds, we, those can go back into promoting economic development to business growth here in Yanhill County. The general fund dollars that we give, I think the parks was 70,000. I looked it up yesterday. It is $188,000 that we give. That can come back to our general fund so that when we're in budget season this next year and we're faced with some of these federal cuts and, and, and state cuts, what are we going to cut? That's where we're going to be at, right? Is that, because that's where we're at now. We don't have, if we're going to not fall underneath that million dollars of discretionary funds, it has to be made up or we're going to start cutting services, right? And so this is a way for us to start reinvesting back into ourselves and into our parks. And, you know, nothing's saying that it has to go to parks forever, right? We could go for, I'm happy to start to invest into our parks for the next three to five years. And in the master plan, campgrounds is one of those things. Give them those tools to be able to start funding themselves, right? Rather than our general fund. And then that money can go into the, the fairgrounds. And, and if we do get to continue that conversation with you of moving our fairgrounds, that there, that gives us the, the funds and the ability to, to be creative in how we want to do that and, and really set it up properly rather than having to do it on a shoestring.
I got one more question. Everybody that you've reached out to, and I don't need to know publicly what they are, but can you send a list to Ken or something of the people that you've reached out to so I can go talk to them and just see?
Absolutely.
You know, what drives them, what, why the answer was, yes, I'd love a TLT in our area. And I just like do some follow-up on that.
Yeah.
Do you have a list of that?
I, I do. Yeah, I can put together.
Okay.
No problem.
And just, just clarification, you did mention that Orla, the Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association, their Director of Government Affairs had, was it in support of this? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're generally supportive. So long as we, you know, they're a membership organization. So if, if their members are, have a problem with what and how we're spending on, that's where Orla steps in. I had a very good conver, I think it is Greg, Gary.
Greg Astley.
Greg, yeah. He sent an email just this morning. He, he was, he was generally supportive of, yes, and thank you for coming to us first before you do this. And I think that again, you know, those were informal conversations and he had offered to get together the members that are here in Yanhill County to, to discuss. And so maybe that's something that you and I can attend. Commissioner Johnson, if that was, you know, to, to have that more formal conversation.
I think just in the beginning, I mean, there's a lot of information missing here. I know which way I lean without having a lot of that information and that is towards Commissioner Starett where it's somewhere, somehow, it may not be a TLT and I, this, I've told many people this in public because it came up even during my own campaign and people ask me, well, where do you land on a TLT? Somewhere, somehow this will affect businesses. There's implementation costs, there's admin costs, there's a lot of, there's also value, which I've asked that question of, and I'm not expecting it to be, and this is just a proposal so that we can all kind of start that conversation of what it looks like in this county. But somewhere, somehow we need to know all of those numbers before, at least for me, that
Can you?
That I would be in favor of this. Now, I will say, you know, I can appreciate that you're tugging at my heartstrings with like the fairgrounds and funding with that. I, for me, in my vision of moving the fairgrounds, my, my goal was never to come to the public and ask for funds to do that. I truly believe that I can work within my means of the values that are already there without doing that. Because what my love of or what's the public's love of to go to the fairs may not be somebody else's. So I want it to be more focused to those people that do enjoy that and, and, and really look at it with the value that's already there. So, but I mean, there's still a lot of questions to, to be asked as far as values and effects that this is going to have on our businesses. There's a lot of businesses to reach out to, to see. There's.
Do you want to, can you give me a list of questions that you have that I can?
My, my biggest thing right now is I want to talk to everybody that you talk to, this list that you keep coming up with. And you can either give it in public right now. I'm not asking you to do that because I don't want a business to be outed in some way or by name, but I would definitely love that list and go talk to them and.
Okay. Yeah, no problem.
Yeah. And then I want to go back to, to Greg Astley because the letter that, that he sent to all of the commissioners basically said that you had contacted him on October 30th, saying you wanted to talk about it. And he suggested meeting with lodging operators and stakeholders to get their feedback, although that meeting has not taken place, the item is on the agenda today. And he's saying that it's basically this discussion is premature without that stakeholder discussion. So I just want to make sure that we're, that, that we're, you're not saying, or we're not leaving that Greg Astley at Orla is in support of this because he's not.
No, what, as I said, that when we started, that this before, I wanted to know what your appetite, if there was a hard no between the two of you, I'm not going to waste our business owners or operators' time in having these meetings, right? In having, in, in convening a meeting with their members. Because it's, it's useless at that point. So this was to give you my lens of what I see and see if there is somewhat of an appetite. If it's a hard no, then we'll move on, but you know, but he was supportive of the idea of, of it and, and getting people. And that was my ask was that we could have that meeting. And as I said, it wasn't, we have not been able to make that happen between now and then. So which, you know, people's schedules are hard. Go ahead, Dan.
Just for what it's worth, I am a member of the Orla Government Affairs Committee and it did come up in one of our meetings. I will say broadly, I cannot speak specifically for Orla. I am an Orla member. And our organization is, Orla is pro transient lodging taxes with the permission of the, with the stakeholders involved, right? That, that is, it, it is a, a general stance across the board that Orla supports transient lodging taxes for the promotion of tourism.
And that's a really important proviso because it's the stakeholders who are going to have to do the reporting, the compliance, the, all of that. So I want to make sure that we're not leaving them. So I want to make sure that we're not leaving them out of the discussion.
I will say, just for what it's worth, and I'm not saying this pro or against, um, in, in unincorporated Pima County, I mean, sorry, geez, my way back to Tucson times. In unincorporated Yamhill County, the majority of the properties are, that would be affected by this tax would be Airbnb or Verbo. Um, because there aren't hotel, larger hotel properties in unincorporated Yamhill County currently. That doesn't mean that that won't ever be the case. Um, the mechanism of collection on that front is ridiculously easy. Because it's already, because Airbnb and Verbo have those mechanisms built in. They're actually the easiest people to collect from. The ones that are much more challenging are smaller properties, uh, corporate properties that have to specifically write a check. So just as an information point there, um, you also can charge, uh, charge the T L T process for the collection and the administration. You can, you can build that charge into, a- as McMinnville does, uh, I think we pay, uh, McMinnville assesses five for six thousand dollars for the administration of that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some comments online. Uh, do you want to promote whichever one you thought was first, Bailey? Emily?
Uh, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, for the record, my name is Emily Souls, representing the Oregon Small Business Association in opposition to the, uh, transient lodging tax. Uh, the Oregon Small Business Association has major concerns about the proposed T L T, as we believe its implementation would reduce the region's competitive edge, and ultimately harm the very small businesses that it hopes to protect. As it's been said, the tax is paid for by the visitors to the county. We believe this makes the county less competitive by increasing the price for someone to visit, pushing people to find lodging out of the county lines. And we also believe that this creates a trickle down effect to the restaurants, the retailers and other small businesses who lose out when people don't come, or when they have less money to spend, or if they find lodging out of the county. Many Oregonians and our small businesses struggle to make ends meet, and we believe that this proposal will have the opposite effect of its intended purposes. For these reasons, the Oregon Small Business Association stands in opposition to the proposed T L T. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Emily.
Bailey, you want to promote the next one? Good morning, Sean.
Good, Sean.
Thank you again. Uh, for the record, Sean Cleve, representing the Taxpayers Association of Oregon. Uh, I am brought back to my Oregon Farm Bureau days. Uh, I actually have had the, odd experience of, uh, both representing the Farm Bureau on land use and, uh, advocating for housing policy through the Realtors. Uh, one of the things I think it's important for you to, uh, consider as you're talking about this is the conflicts, for agriculture in the area. Uh, sometimes our tax policies have perverse incentives. Um, certainly, uh, I know this commission and, and other, uh, cities have dealt with, a lack of affordable housing and part of that conversation has been these V R B Os. I would hate for a tax to be put in place that creates a perverse incentive that encourages, uh, more of these properties, uh, to be built out as a way to bring in more revenue for the county, and creating as such, uh, more conflicts between agricultural economies and tourism. Uh, just something I wanted to place on the record as you continued your discussion. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay.
So what would you, um, I, I'm just no Commissioner Starett's position here. You just want to reach out to.
I, I don't know that there's anything we need to vote on. I just.
No.
I'm going to keep doing my homework on it and, and we can.
When would you like to bring, have this conversation?
As soon as you get me information, I'll start, uh, reaching out to individuals that you've talked to.
Yeah.
I'd really like to talk to the old board, uh, the Y C T E D E C.
Yeah, that's a long one.
Um, get a lot of background on that and why, why disbanded, uh, what they did, uh, during their term, how long their terms were, who was on it. Yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I would, I mean, I, I'll, I'll leave it at this is that if, you know, no new taxes. Um, you know, we're talking about, you can call a fee or a tax or whatever, but I believe that if government is, charging something, you can call it whatever you want, a tax, a tariff, a fee. But we are having a conversations about charging our, taxpayers, our constituents, fares on our bus system. We are having a conversation about paying for parking at our parks. These are, I, I fail to see the differences between the, between any of it. And so, um, to me, I think I would much rather be charging the people that are coming here to using the infrastructure, to right-size this than to continue to put it on to our workforce, our small businesses and, uh, just the, our, our general taxpayers. So, uh, I look at it through that lens. If, you want to disagree with that, then you, because of the, the name, but if, if that's what we're going to do, then that's, that's, that's how I look at it. And I would much rather charge people who are coming here, than to charge the people that live here for these, for, to, to try to, build those funds of, of our parks or a bake sale to, to try to, raise money at, for our parks or any of those things. Uh, I mean, in addition to, yes, if the volunteers want to help out, then that's great, but, um, i- i- and pitch in, and then I'm fully supportive of that. But I think that we need real change and real, a, a real movement of numbers here and, and a, and a ten thousand dollar, uh, once a year fundraiser just isn't going to, to cut it for the long-term needs of, these master plans that we have in place. So, uh, I'll leave it there and I'll get you those, those names.
Appreciate it. Thanks. All right.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yep. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item I nine, discuss status of county financial assistance agreement, CFAA, negotiations with Oregon Health Authority, O H A, and consideration of sending the following to O H A. Quote, Yamhill County will continue operating its community mental health program pursuant to O R S four three zero dot six four zero. Yamhill County intends to execute a new CFAA once mutually acceptable terms are reached. The Oregon Health Authority's proposed changes to longstanding agreement language require incorporation of those revisions collectively requested by the counties, necessary to protect the community-focused mental health services. Who wants to kick that one off? I know we had a discussion with A O C on Friday and it was very lengthy. And I've never seen such a great, uh, come together of thirty-sixth county, yeah, unification of counties, so.
Great.
Well, and I thought, you know, because we had the meeting with, um, uh, A O C with the other counties on this topic. And then, uh, we were also at the time up against some O H A at the time deadlines, that they wanted some responses from the county, but, um, and so this was a recommended message that was put together, to enable Lindsay to be able to respond to O H A's request. You know, because negotiations are still ongoing, but not, you know, we need to have this discussion, um, informal. And so that's why this language is on the agenda and brought forward today. So then we can hear the board's thoughts on next steps and how to respond because recognizing that, it's kind of fluid right now because Christian could probably speak, uh, for some of the discussions that county councils are having and with the negotiations. But also the fact that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we don't have another formal session until December fourth. And there's some, even though O H A has extended some, the deadlines to respond, it's still within that window. The latest deadline's still within the window, what, before we're next able to get together as a board, and, and talk about some direction. So that's why this is on the agenda.
Yeah, I just want to jump in. I've been clear in this meeting that I would be definitely in favor of, uh, telling O H A that at this particular juncture, this is not a contract we could sign. And what was so wonderful about the ongoing meetings we've had at L G A C and even the, the meeting, the special meeting on Friday, was that you had, this wasn't a, um, a right-left issue. This was a right-wrong issue. This was basically saying to O H A that this is such a textbook example of unfunded mandates, and that you're putting on the backs of the counties what you have been mandated to do regarding the state hospital. It is impossible to comply with that without the money. So I appreciate that our Director Manfred has been sort of just, you know, i- i- in, in the, in the trenches trying to address this because you've got the, he who has the gold makes the rules and that's O H A. And we're saying, that might be fine, but we provide the services. So thank you for that. I would be in favor of signing this and, and telling O H A that at this point, we are unified, in that the counties will not be able to sign contracts that do not provide them funding to do the behavioral health services that they're requiring, and that we want to do.
I'm, yeah, I mean, I'm right behind you guys on this and then the rest of the counties. I think that this is, the unfunded mandates and the requests is, we just can't do it. There's no way. So I believe it's their responsibility. It's not, uh, and they need to be, um, on the hook for some of that. And it can't, the state just can't keep putting it back on to us.
Agreed.
So I would move approval of the board, uh, signing this, uh, statement, that, uh, Yamhill County will continue to operate the community mental health programs pursuant to O R S four thirty point six four oh. And we intend to execute a new CFAA once the mutually acceptable terms are reached.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous. Like, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All this.
All right.
And Chair, we did have, uh, two requests for add-ons.
Okay.
For this morning. I'm scrambling here. Um, so I think the, the first, which one am I, there's, what's the second one? One is a purchase and sale agreement.
Correct.
Uh, getting authorization. Christian emailed yesterday and we can upload that in the packet. This is in regards to the former public health building. Uh, we've received an offer. We've basically accepted that offer and we're, it's late breaking because we're wanting to really, uh, be able to, um, sign off on the contract, but we're still trading contract language. And we want to start the due diligence period as quickly as possible. So seeking authorization to execute that agreement.
And you're still well within your original authorization, so.
Correct. Uh, the offer is, uh, one point five.
Point five.
At one point five million for the building.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Okay.
So if the board is interested in doing that, I have some proposed language for.
You can do that, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So this would be a consideration of a commercial real estate sale agreement between Yamhill County and Oregon Mennonite, Residential Services Incorporated and Oregon Nonprofit Public Benefit Corporation, for the sale of county-owned real property located at four two four Northeast Ford Street in McMinnville, Oregon nine seven one two eight. Also known as tax lots R four four two one B C zero three six zero zero, and R four four two one B C zero three seven zero zero in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars, and declaring this property as surplus property, and that it is not in the best interest of the county to sell this property as otherwise allowed under O R S two seven five. And authorizing the county administrator to execute the agreement and close the sale, subject to the terms and conditions provided in the agreement. So as Ken said, this kicks off the due diligence period. It, it simply gets the contract in place. There are a number of things that still need to happen, a number of conditions that still need to be met.
Sure. Yep.
And then we would ask that, uh, Ken and Board Chair sign the agreement, um, and then we can get that process started.
Yep. So moved. Any further discussion?
None.
None.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much.
And then I remembered the second add-on item. It was discussion about the, uh, food bank grants, the Economic Development Funds.
I would have completely forgotten and that is a big one. So as you know, the board approved, uh, funding for, um, just sort of to supplant the fact that the SNAP benefits had not been forthcoming. So I want to say thank you to Joy A. Goodrum, um, who, and, and Christian. Christian got the contract ASAP. I believe it was Thursday afternoon. And the biggest problem was trying to get ahold of these food banks because some of them are volunteers. They're not there all the time. They're related to churches. But what we did find out, and I was kind of surprised to find out, it was not that easy to give away this money. And that is because Y C A P, and Y C A P is the regional food bank that distributes the food to the other, the other food banks. Y C A P has a, a requirement that basically says you cannot ask for any type of means testing. You can't say, I need I D. I need to know you're a SNAP beneficiary. And they basically, um, were saying, we, we can't really accept this, because we wouldn't be able to ask those questions. And we really wanted to make sure that our SNAP beneficiaries, were the ones who were not, that who are going to be, um, receiving this. So in the process, um, we were kind of frustrated with that. And a couple of food banks said, well, we'll, we'll take the money anyway. But then we heard, well, you can't really take it because then you will be, um, at odds with your agreement with Y C A P. In the meantime, I've had conversations or communications with Mike Yates at Y C A P, and, uh, he explained why they were not able to, uh, to, uh, our food banks were not able to accept this. So here we are, and we're at the place where it's not something where we can send out checks. No one can, um, no one can comply with the, the grant as we have written it. So we can do one of two things. There is a, a rescission, uh,
Yeah.
Policy.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So there's a couple of different options that when Commissioner Starett reached out to me. Um, and one of the options is under the procedures ordinance, uh, there's a motion to reconsider that's in the procedures policy. So a commissioner who voted in the majority at the next formal session can ask for that to come up and, under reconsideration. It's a, basically a means to repeal, revise, or, or do something with the previous approval. Um, so you have that as an option if, if the board is wanting to change course and not do the grant program. Um, that's one option. The, the, the other thing that we went in is, because I think there was questions around, I mentioned, uh, if there's consensus for a pause, on, because it seemed like there was consensus last week when this was approved, that we get the funds out as quickly as possible and move pretty quick. And then there's been, of course, changes at the federal level as far as the budget and benefits and some of those. And so if it's, um, if there's consensus to kind of hit pause for now, to where staff just kind of takes a step back, or no change and proceed, but the likelihood that most of the organizations that we're reaching out to aren't going to be able to accept the funds or the grant as presented. Um, the other possible, you know, option would be is to modify that on however you want to proceed. But again, I just wanted to share some of the various options that are available because we're kind of at this quandary. Because when we started getting this information back and it was kind of like hitting pause, but we had board approval last week to proceed and get these funds out as quickly as possible. So.
And is, so is there no appetite for, like I said last week, just to remove the, the burden of, SNAP or I Ds and those types of things? Can the food banks can use the money at their discretion?
I, I want it traceable and tracked. That's where I would be coming from.
Just.
But even if we pause it, we're still going to have.
What they spent the money on or, or?
How many people we've served with the, the dollars that we have to answer to where that money originated from, which is all the citizens in the county? And we have to have numbers to back that up.
Sure.
With, I think.
Would, would, I mean, amount of poundage of food that they purchased or?
Number of people, poundage of food. There's a lot of.
Yeah.
For me, uh, information that needs to go along with that. But I will say, if we pause, we're still going to have the same issue, but we can deal with it then. I would be in favor of a pause.
Right. Yeah, I, I think I, I would like to still give them the money if we can, uh, if Y C A P or their, um, red tape or strings attached, uh, would allow to keep track of that. Um, you know, they, they may be able to give you that number just on average already. A lot of them, um, five thousand dollars buys X amount of food. Um, and we can typically serve X amount of people with that many poundage. Uh, you know, I would assume that that's somewhat of a formula that a lot of them have and will be able to get that. But, um, so I, I, I mean, again, that's an assumption. So I'd be okay with a pause if that could, could get clarified. But let them use the money as, um, at their discretion to buy what they want and, and do what they, are in the business of doing and feeding people.
Just a clarification, because this is something I was not aware of, but this came from, uh, Mike Yates at Y C A P, again, the regional food bank. It said, Oregon Food Bank Partner Agencies cannot ask for any kind of picture identification, social security number, proof of household size, income verification or address. Just to clarify, they're not regulations defined by Y C A P. The agreement that all of our partner agencies have to sign and comply with is decided by Feeding America, Oregon Food Bank with the Department of Human Services. So that is, those are their requirements. So the grant as it exists now would not be something anybody could do anything with. In talking to the food banks, yes, all of the food banks, uh, ex. uh, except for, I believe Yamhill, which said that they only serve 16 families a month and they didn't really need the money. But everybody can at some point use more money for food. I think what, for me, what, what this goes back to is what was the intended purpose? And we had a, we had a situation. We had people who were depending on SNAP benefits that they weren't getting. Since that has been remedied, I don't know that, I, I don't, I won't say that this isn't going to rear its ugly head again. I'm saying that if we do come into that situation again, we now know more and we're going to be able to rewrite a grant that's going to make it a little bit more, it, it, it's going to make it easier for them to use it. So I think at this point, not hitting pause does nothing because the money can't be used as is, as the grant is written. So I would say, let's hang on to it. And when we do get into a situation like this, we know we can, we can get this out.
I think for what Commissioner Johnston, I'm hearing you say is that he's not asking for any of the picture IDs or anything. He just wants to know how many people were served and maybe a tonnage of food. So.
Right. So it sounds like.
That, that doesn't fit in any of those things you just listed from YCAP. So we would be able to move forward with those.
Other than, other than Commissioner Starett's point is that the reason for us originally do it was a stopgap measure that now that staff, SNAP's been funded, we hit pause because it's only been, we don't know how the length of this is going to go. So at least it's sitting there. We know that we're all in agreement to, if it comes up again, that we would use these funds to help out the food banks. And it sounds like there's a way to, at some level, to keep my concerns at bay, that there's some level of traceability for this, for the grant. So I would, I guess I'd be in favor of pause. It sounded like you're.
I would, yeah, I mean, I, if, if I got to pick, I would say, let's move forward with, um, just new language, but and, and get them the money to feed hungry people. But that's.
The only thoughts that I would just share is when this was approved last week and there, a lot of the discussion and the consensus of the program that was approved to release these funds included specific conditions that we wanted included in the agreements. And if we're finding that we can't do that, we may have to just take action to.
Remove it.
Remove it. And then any discussions about using the funds for another grant program, it could be come in the form of the board asking staff to put something together and, and come back at a later date.
Instead of modifying. So pause, you still have to modify. So you just want to remove it.
If you just remove.
And then just a commissioner bring it back forward again when we do, when the time comes. And obviously we roughly know where we're at already with it, but I do understand that. Okay.
So I would make a motion to rescind. Is that, is that the appropriate, to rescind the, to rescind the?
Previous board order?
Previous board order.
I don't have the number in front of me.
I don't either.
Find it here. Board Order 25364. That is correct. Beat you.
Make a motion to rescind Board Order 25364.
Motion's been made. Any further discussion?
None.
None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
No good deed, right, Joya? Who knew how hard it was going to be to give out money? But that doesn't mean we can't find another way in a workaround and something else going forward. We learned an awful lot over the past three or four days. Thank you for that work.
Thank you, Joya.
Okay, that wraps us up for agenda items. Yeah, no, okay. Let's do, um, okay, it's public hearings. There's none. So let's go to L announcements.
Yeah. We mentioned the special AOC, um, meeting, Ron Kaffa. Veterans Day this week, again, can't say it enough. One more time, happy, happy Veterans Day this week. Was in town for the McMinnville Parade and then a, a flag waving with the Newburgh Legion, um, as well, which was a group, a couple of guys out there holding it down. Had a, my town hall in Dayton, um, a lot of discussion around immigration and, um, and just general economic development as well. Got to ride the bus, was thanking Brandon Dross, who is on our Yamhill County Transit Committee. Put together a ride and learn with myself and Kevin and, um, Emily from the News Register. Uh, we, uh, Cynthia took us up to Sherwood to catch 44 down to the Transit Center and just, you know, again, I've done this once before on my own, but it was fun to do it with, with these guys who are big advocates for, um, public transit. And we, um, you know, we sat in the back and somebody came back there. I say, well, this, this is the chatty section. You gotta, you gotta talk about, you, you gotta chat with us if you're back here. And, uh, you know, it was great. These guys opened up and talked about how and why they needed the bus system and where they were going and who they were seeing and, um, you know, if they would, if a fee would be, um, you know, hindersome or not, and, you know, there's wide ranges of opinions on that. So it, I, I learned something, you know, this is the second time I've done it and, and learned something new and see, there's probably, I think just on that route from Sherwood to McMinnville, I think there was about 20 people, if I counted properly, that got on that, on, on and off. Uh, yeah, so it was great. Newburgh 4H Awards last night. I last minute had to miss it. My apologies. And, um, I was excited though. I keep trying to get my son to join, uh, John Nyberg's group. Um, you know, we don't live too far away from that. And I was really sad I have to miss that. I'm sure you'll, you'll listen.
Yeah, they got a whole lot of Kit Johnston last night.
Yeah. I, I was really, really upset last minute I had to miss that. Um, theater production Wizard of Oz at Newburgh High School. They gave her one more week this week. If you get the chance to go see that, it's a great show. They have, they put on, they have a very impressive program. More meetings around recovery, high school, and this week and next week. Keep you updated on those as they come in. Met with Sam this week and talked about, um, you know, what, just our, our monthly check-in that we have and, uh, largely appreciate, uh, his, his support and, and, um, what it is I'm working on and how, and how we work together there and, um, and mine his. Uh, and you know, one of the things that we talked about largely is maybe a potential remodel here and being able to bring over from the jail. Inmates that, you know, to be able to, to come without having to walk them outside or that there would be a, a secure access that's ADA and so on. So that was one thing that we talked about. Ken's been a part of that as well. And I think I'm gonna leave it there. Commissioner Starett?
Well, last night at the annual 4H Awards, I have to say, that's one of those, you see these people who are supporting their kids, the 4H leaders, and they did get a whole lot of Commissioner Kit Johnston. Um, he read your part and he read his part and he was up there a really long time, but he did a great job. He pronounced, um, Pavy correctly. I didn't know it's.
It is not cabbies.
It's a rabbit of some kind and I, I learned.
Rabbits and.
Is it a rabbit?
Hamster, hamsters.
Anyway. These kids are amazing. They are so dedicated and their 4H leaders are so, um, they're just really, really committed and their families. And I was looking around that room at the cultural center and I thought, this is such a Yamhill County backbone, hardworking people who want to make sure that things succeed. So that was wonderful. And thank you, Commissioner Johnston, for getting up there over and over and over again. The Veterans Day Parade was really impressive, really good, um, really good turnout. Also want to say that, um, the gas tax, the governor, uh, signed it finally. She kind of slow walked that so it would make it harder to get this as a referendum on the ballot. But there are lots of folks in Yamhill County and throughout the state who are very committed to making sure that this gets unpassed. And, uh, there are lots of places throughout the county. There are lots of volunteers, 157 volunteers who are going to be getting petition signatures. So please be on the lookout along 99. There are lots of pop-ups. I'm going to be posting some locations on my Facebook page that include, uh, every place from Sheridan, uh, all the way through the entire county in every city. And, um, please do, when you see folks out there at these pop-up, and also there are some fixed locations and, uh, and businesses that are willing to, uh, to, to get petition signatures. We have to make sure that this gas tax that was passed gets unpassed.
Okay. Thursday night, I had the opportunity to update the Yamhill County Farm Bureau on the state of the county. Appreciate the opportunity to do that. And also jury man who's been there 20 plus years, retired. So there'll be new incoming president there. I think it was Casey that was, uh, nominated and voted in. So congratulations to both of them, one incoming and one that spent over 20 years, uh, doing a really good job for the, the Farm Bureau. Friday was AOC. We've talked about that many times already. We talked and discussed the CFAA. Saturday, we had the veterans parade, uh, very, very good turnout. Um, Mayor Kim Morris spoke, um, Rep Lucetta Elmer spoke. Um, I thought, I thought it was great and just so fortunate that we have people in this community that are willing to put together and coordinate that stuff. I, I think the other nice thing was when Heather reached out to all of us to, to see if we could all like walk together and then, uh, I think for the most part, uh, the majority of the McMinnville City Council ended up being there and it, I thought it showed, uh, pretty darn well. Tuesday, um, me and my wife went to the American Legion here in McMinnville and supported them for their turkey lunch. It was really good, very packed. Another very good turnout, uh, in support of our veterans. Uh, Wednesday, I had the opportunity to speak at, uh, the leadership group for the chamber. Um, and it it went as well as to be expected. Uh, I think the best part was when I hung around and Mayor Kim Morris was the follow-up speaker to me and just hanging back, wanting to see what she was gonna say. Well, there's a lot of overlapping questions of, well, what happens in the county versus the city? And so it actually worked out kind of well to, once she was done and got to the Q and A part, we both started answering questions and thanks to John Olson for putting that on and for the invite to be able to speak in front of them. I thought it was, it was, it was a very nice group. Um, they actually just came back before we spoke at about three o'clock. They came back from State Capitol and they just got done doing a tour there and met with Anna Scharf, Lucetta. I think Bruce was busy. They couldn't meet with Senator Starr. But yeah, gave them kind of a 35,000 foot overview of what's going on in the county and what it is for, to be a commissioner and maybe I scared some people, maybe somebody wants to run. I don't know. So anyway, that's, uh, that was my week and if there's nothing else for the good of the order? Nope. All right. I'm gonna close her out at 11.